We are going to start with a motion for a call to order, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting is in order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for anybody who's not familiar with the emergency exits, they're right behind you, and then we have one over in the far corner. We will move on to the approval of Order of Agenda. I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll do the approval of minutes with a clerk's report.
Be resolved the Board of Education acceptance minutes of the business meeting held March 14, 2023.
I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll do the approval of minutes with a clerk's report.
Be resolved the Board of Education acceptance minutes of the business meeting held March 14, 2023.
I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comments. Speakers will be recognized who wish to address the Board on Agenda I's only, I think, for certain reasons. So, we will start with the presentations and Students of the Month. Who would like to go first? Mr. Meyer.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Springer. I'd like to ask Mrs. Rules, please come up and join me. It is our pleasure to welcome our March Student of the Month, Kellen Damasi. Kellen, come on up. Kellen is a smart, determined, and respectful boy. His work ethic is exceptional, and his enthusiasm to learn is uncanny. Kellen is always an active participant throughout the day and thrives on sharing his knowledge with the rest of the class. He is the first to help his classmates whenever they are in need, and he always volunteers to help at cleanup. Kellen is exceptionally considerate and shows compassion and empathy to all his classmates. Kellen's favorite activity is math. He loves multiplying and dividing, and will often challenge himself with difficult problems. Kellen's favorite special class is physical education. He looks forward to being an active, and, as he says, using his physical body. He loves finding new book series, and reading is something he greatly enjoys. Kellen's favorite memory so far from third grade is when he made ornaments of our pets for the classroom door contest. He was excited since he loves art, contests, and dogs. I have three, so I really love dogs. Outside of school, Kellen loves to practice sports with his dad. He loves everything football and has a ton of knowledge about the NFL. In the future, he hopes to play in the NFL. We know it's a very, it's a great goal to have, and we look forward to seeing Kellen give it everything his ass. If the NFL didn't work out, we know he will be super successful in anything he does. At home, Kellen is a responsible dog owner, as he loves to feed his dog. He also has a pet lizard that he enjoys observing and taking care of. He's a big brother to his sister, who's now in kindergarten. Kellen has said he loves to play imaginary games with her, and what makes her happy makes me happy. When we told him about tonight, his first question was, can my sister come? He's a great big brother. Kellen is delightful having school, and he adds so much enthusiasm to whatever activity we are doing. He's a role model inside and outside of the school. We are truly honored and proud to have Kellen in our school this year. Thank you, Kellen, for being such a wonderful young man. We know you are going to accomplish great things in your bright future. We are proud to have nominated Kellen for March Student of the Month. There's no one else who deserves it more. Congratulations.
Kellen, congratulations.
Thank you.
The Harlem was very nice.
Congratulations. I love your wizard's top hat.
Right, I guess Mr. Shug's next.
Hey, Mr. Shug. Couldn't wait, couldn't wait. Good evening. Before we begin, I'd like to just take a moment to note we will use TimeKettle, a two-way communication tool committed to uniting people of different languages and cultures by breaking down language barriers within innovative technology. Those were not my words. They were directly from the website, and I do not work for the company, but it's pretty great. While this is useful in assisting and strengthening school home communication, today was a first for me. While this is useful in assisting and strengthening school home communication, today was a first for me. I used it to interview this evening's honoree for Middle School Student of the Month. Using one old iPhone, six, mine, a downloaded TimeKettle app, and two earpieces, Spanish-speaking seventh grader Jordana Pizarro Guarango and her English-speaking middle school principal had a great conversation about what it takes to be Student of the Month at HBMS. This evening, Jordana's mother and father will use the earpieces to hear my words spoken in English, which she is most comfortable listening to in Spanish. I am pleased to introduce you March's Student of the Month from Hampton Bay's Middle School, Jordana Pizarro Guarango. You can stay up here. Jordana, a new student with us this school year, is in seventh grade. In our interview, Jordana shared that she enjoys physical education class, especially the volleyball unit, where she can play on a team with her classmates. She also enjoys math, especially the challenge of what she's learned in the fractions unit. What she enjoys most, though, she told me, is learning English from all of her teachers, especially Ms. Prado. Jordana is a serious student, committed to learning from her teachers, and doing her best at her new school. When asked what she enjoys doing outside of the school day, Jordana explained she loves to read, especially comics, which she borrows from the public library. While she is in no rush to grow up or think about life after middle school or high school, Jordana is inspired by her teachers and wants to become a teacher. When I asked her what grade level and subject area, she told me middle school math, because of Ms. Whiffen's positive influence on her this year. Jordana is off to a strong start at HBMS and has quickly made a positive, memorable first impression on us. We are fortunate to have her as a member of our middle school community and are excited to see what her future holds at HBMS. Congratulations, Jordana. We are all very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Moving right along. Mr. Morgan, welcome.
Good evening. First, I'd like to have Mrs. Leilak and Malas join me at the podium. I would like to present the award for March Student of the Month to Tanya Agüero. Tanya has been a part of our school community for about a year and is truly deserving of the Student of the Month award. Originally from Costa Rica, Tanya has made a positive impact during her short time here in Hampton Bay's. One of Tanya's standout qualities is her enthusiasm for learning, particularly in her favorite class, English as a New Language with Mrs. Gonzalez. She enjoys engaging activities and the clear explanations provided by Mrs. Gonzalez. Mrs. Gonzalez praised Tanya's work ethic and truly appreciates her contributions in class each day. Mr. Perez, Tanya's global history teacher, said Tanya is a naturally inquisitive kid, always asking for more information to satisfy her curiosity. She's one of the hardest-working students in the class, and even with her excellent grades on assignments and tests, she will be the first one to raise her hand and ask for help when she's unsure of something. She's also very kind and considerate, always the first to say hello or good morning. Ms. Edwards added that Tanya has such a positive attitude and outlook in life. She is dedicated to her studies and is also the first to help another when they are in need of it. She is a kind-hearted person. Ms. McCurlan said Tanya is one of the hardest-working, kindest individuals that she has ever met. She is a pleasure to have in class and an amazing person. Tanya's involvement in the art club and Ben Vinito's showcases her creative talents, particularly in cartoons and animations. And in her free time, she enjoys listening to music, reading, and spending quality time with her family. I might note that when I spoke to Tanya, she said that there may be family from Costa Rica tuning in on our livestream, so... Looking towards the future, Tanya plans to attend college and pursue a career in the arts or psychology. She would like the opportunity to travel and explore different cultures before making a decision on her career path. Tanya would like to thank Mrs. Gonzalez and her teachers for recognizing her efforts and achievements, and to her fellow students, Tanya offers valuable advice. Follow your teacher's guidance, learn from your mistakes, and always stay true to yourself. Tanya's commitment to personal growth and academic excellence serves as an inspiration to all of our students. Congratulations to Tanya Agüero on being selected as our Student of the Month.
Guess we'll move along to Mr. Shard. How are you, sir?
Good evening. It is an honor and a privilege to present the vauditorian and the salutatorian of the Class of 2024 to the Board of Education this evening. I would like to begin by presenting our salutatorian, Samantha Craycar. Samantha, why don't you come on down? So, as you can imagine, achieving the honor of salutatorian of your class is no easy feat. Samantha has done that through taking an incredibly rigorous course of study, owning a 101.04 weighted GPA, having taken 10 advanced placement courses, achieving the status of AP Scholar with distinction. She is a member of three honor societies, not one, two, or three, three. National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, TRIAM. She is a Capstone Diploma candidate, having completed both the seminar and research sequence here at Hampton Bay's High School. She has a research and science project that has been a culmination of four years' worth of work. Her research question contains more words that I can't pronounce, so I'm going to say it has something to do with cancer, cancer and metastasis, but I'll let her explain that tomorrow night. If you want to come see that, actually, tomorrow night at the Research and Science Symposium, 6 o'clock, you'll have a chance to see Samantha in action. She has been a Ryla facilitator, a volunteer at the HB Volunteer Ambulance Corps. She's a LEO, a Key Club member, an Interact member. She's on the Southampton Town Youth Advisory Board. She is on our No Place for Hate team. Her resume goes on and on and on. She's accomplished things over the last four years that probably most people haven't done in a lifetime. She will be attending CCNY, the City College of New York, majoring in bio slash primed, where she's going to go on to do pretty amazing things in the world. So, Samantha Craycar. Okay, at this time, I would like to present the vauditorian of the Class of 2024, Emily Robinson. Emily, why don't you come on down? So, Emily stands before you here with a 102.86 weighted GPA. She has done so through taking the most rigorous course of study she could possibly find, including 11 advanced placement courses. She is an AP Scholar with distinction. She is also a Capstone Diploma candidate, having achieved excellence in research for both seminar and the research course as a junior. A three-time honor society member as well, okay, a member of Interact. She is active in the music department in both the band and chorus. Her research and science project is with Dr. Turney, who's her mentor at Columbia University Medical Center, and she's doing some really interesting work on evaluating the role that financial status and education and how they contribute to degenerative decline in your brain or cognitively or something. Please help me. Yes, okay, all right.
You're experiencing it right now.
It's actually happening as we speak. Again, if you want to learn more about that decline, and my rapid decline here, you can come watch Emily tomorrow at 6 o'clock, and she's presenting her four years' worth of research. So, she has a history of working with students in dance, a really well-rounded young woman who is going to a highly competitive program at Stony Brook University in their honors college. She'll be attending their WISE program, Women in Science and Engineering, very exclusive, and will be majoring in physics. So, doing more complicated things that I can't pronounce, but I'm sure changing the world in the process. So, Emily Robinson, congratulations.
Congratulations, Emily. Congratulations. Congratulations, Emily. Good luck at college. I hope you have a sweet night.
Okay, congratulations again to all. We are going to take a quick five-minute break for anybody who wants to take some pictures, and then anybody who wants to come back for the fun stuff.
Our students went to Fordham University. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Morgan took Mr. Verdone and the students there last week. They competed at the Davids Center in a two-day competition. And the students who were not in the competition team but in the class also attended to support the students. And while they couldn't be with the computing team, Mr. Morgan brought them around as alma mater, Fordham University, and gave them a little bit of the city life experience. So just remember, the kids from seventh grade all the way to 12th grade are getting their feet on all sorts of different campuses. Last month, we were walking across the University of Delaware's campus on a Sunday morning, and a student said to me, "Just can't imagine myself going to a college like this. It's rural, it's in a town." But it just doesn't seem like there's a lot going on, and I can imagine at night there's not a lot going on. A month later, a group of students are right there in center, where you're in the heart of everything 24/7. So it's been a real great exposure through these programs. So we want to celebrate the VE kids and their national competition last week. Their marketing proposal, West Hampton, our neighbors to the west, have been helpful. They have a really great program that's been well-established for a number of years. And Amy particularly over there, who runs that program, is a mentor for us in the program. The VE kids are going to join us on the Budget Roadshow in May when we go out to the community and talk. Mr. Verdone's excited to bring those kids. We've brought the science research kids in the past, the culinary students, the robotics students, our hospitality kids. So we bring some real proof of what's going on behind the four walls of the Hampton Bay schools. Next month, Mr. Shug and Dr. Della Sprozza in the seventh grade, they're currently in the fishing touch phase of a seventh-grade benchmark trip. One we haven't done in the past, we're going to get on the ferry and go to Mystic Seaport. We actually did it in the past pass with Mr. Vemeyer. I think I did it in 1992. We went to Mystic Seaport. A day trip to Connecticut. Went away for a while, but we're bringing it back. And in continuing with the college theme, our seventh-grade students will have their feet on the University of Connecticut's campus at Avery Point. So it's their satellite right there on the water. Got some great marine biology programs there. And then we'll grab some pizza, get on the ferry, and be back in one day. So a fun trip for the seventh graders. Hopefully, it's a great day to get on the ferry across the Sound. Tonight, there are two resolutions under the Business and Finance section of your agenda I want to just draw note to. One is a capital project authorization to complete the fencing project here on the high school campus. That's the JV girls softball backstop and the north property fence line, which is an old, who knows how old it is. It predates all of us, but it's rusted. It's becoming a health and safety hazard. The authorization is from the 2012 capital referendum that we've done. You recall, I talk about this probably twice a year. In 2012, when the voters voted on the 69 different projects that were put forth as facility improvements across the district, we had to designate a list of projects we would want to get done if there was leftover money. Fencing at high school was one of those. So it's really not debatable as to what we could spend money on. That's one of the only projects left. We've done the playground expansion. We've done the other backstops. We've done some district office work, all the things that in 2012 we said we're probably going to need to do in 2022, '23. So that's one. The second one is the Smart Schools Investment Plan Resolution to submit a, in 2012, I believe, in 2012, New York State passed a referendum, put forth to the voters of the entire state to pass $2 billion in bonds for infrastructure around technology and high-tech security in schools. Every school got an allocation. Hampton Bay's got an allocation of $484,000. And the Board of Education and the administration at that time said, "Don't spend it all at once. We could have spent $484,000 all at once, but then all at once in some point in the future, everything would be end of life and need to be replaced again." So we needed it out over these 10 years. And the resolution is to make a draw, an application to the state for $172,000 for a full desktop replacement of computers, of desktop computers in the high school. That was what helped us over the budget line, because we were able to remove that expense from the general fund budget and move it to this bond. After this application is done, if it's fully approved, of the $484,000, there'll be approximately $55,000 left. And so at some point, there's a list of some other priorities. Upgrades to the PA system here in the building. Some of our interactive touch panels are 10 years old at this point, and they're less interactive to touch, as it turns out as time goes on. So things die, things need to be replaced, but we try to do it when we have that money. We don't want it to burn a hole in our pocket, but we want to spend it in a strategic way. So those are two resolutions you'll see tonight. How cool was it? Ms. Fosini was here tonight to experience the solar eclipse as a school community. Thank you to the elementary school for extending the school day a little bit. Otherwise, the students would have been on the bus and wouldn't have been able to experience that. We had more than 100 kids come back to the high school. Larry was working the grill. Couldn't find moon pies in time or sun chips, but we did have starburst. So that kind of went with the theme. And then at the elementary school, we had families come to the lacrosse field for the walkers. It was a real community thing. The fire department, thanks to our partners there, had drone footage. So there, drones looking down as all of our kids are looking up with their glasses and their solar shields. It was very cool. Ms. Narulis was here tonight, too. Her student was a student of the month, but she's been a real leader in the Love on a Leash program. You remember Ray, the fluffy dog who came to visit us last year? It's been a hit in the elementary school. All these dogs have trading cards and playing cards, and so Ryan's got them all lined up, the ones that he's met. We're expanding to the middle school. A little bit different of a model, where kids can sign up for a time to come down to where the dog will be and spend some time with the dog. Only certain classes they can come out of, but it's an opportunity for a kid to just peel away for a few minutes, enjoy that little Ray or whoever it is, and then back to class they go. So that program is, that's fun that that program is expanding as well. We just finished up the first round of state testing, which used to be headline-grabbing news, and is quickly becoming, in a positive way, a real institutionalized part of the program. So I wanted to turn it to Mike for a few minutes to talk about how ELA 3 through 8 went.
Good evening. Can you hear me? No? Sound good?
Yes.
Okay. We had a really successful opening to our New York State assessments. Thank our staff, our administration, especially our students, for all their hard work. This was our first year experiencing the computer-based testing, or what's referred to as CBT, in the middle school. They dumped right in. We were only required to do fifth and eighth grade this year. And when we met last year, Dennis and Jonathan just said, "Let's just get everyone in the pool," right? So outside of field tests, we didn't have any experience, but it was a huge success for many reasons. I also want to note that our participation rate this year increased by over 25% on average in each one of the grade levels. And for the first time in over a decade, over 90% of the students participated in the fifth-grade exam. So that's huge news. We're really happy about that, especially in a year where we had a huge change in how this administration occurred. Go through and we asked, "Why did this happen?" And a few reasons. A very careful and methodical approach created by our leadership team here, Dennis and Jonathan, highly organized. Our tech support team, Andy behind the scenes here tonight, has really been monumental in making everybody feel comfortable. The guy just says, "We'll work it out every time we have a problem." And he does. Somehow, he gets it done. And we did this well ahead. Our planning started last spring, really. So thank you to both the teams for troubleshooting, considering the challenges, seeking input from the staff, and making everyone comfortable with this new way of testing. We also want to thank our teachers for making frequent use of programs like Datamate that allowed students to practice how to navigate this new platform. And not only did they navigate the platform, we weren't just looking at the input. We were able to, with this program, consider the output of students, because they could submit things unlike other districts. We were able to see what children were submitting, analyze it, give them feedback, and build their confidence over time. I think the entire middle school staff should be commended for increasing students' comfort levels and communicating a "do your best" attitude prior to the testing. And I think parents responded positively to the messaging that they put forth, which was not only that we believed that these assessments are worthwhile, but this is a great opportunity to practice for regents. And also, in considering that the PSATs and the SATs are all now digital, this is a great opportunity to get ready for high school before entering ninth grade. Also want to amend the high school here. They had to jump in right in the fall, when our PSATs went digital. Mike and Chris here worked hard with their staff. And again, Brian and Andy got all of our devices ready and made sure that we had a sound testing environment for that change. We'll have the first run of our digital SAT in May for our students. And again, we're more than ready because of everyone's careful planning. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to the teams. Again, what was once headline-grabbing New York State national news. It's great to see so many people feeling good about this and kids getting back into the pool, as you said, to have this experience and to give us some data. New York State continues to make strides, but will hopefully only improve the approach to assessments each year. I'm not going to spend time on enrollments, since I've spoken about that consistently, but I do want to just spend some time on our budget proposal for next year. Tonight, we had anticipated in January, or actually in November, when we set the budget development calendar, that we would be voting to, that we would be recommending for the board's vote to propose a budget number to the community in May. The deadline to do that is Friday, April 26, but this fell in the normal cycle. Today's meeting falls on this day because it's the statewide day, it's the Eastern Suffolk Boces Day for their budget vote, which is a resolution tonight. Unfortunately, New York State hasn't quite finished its homework just yet, and we don't have a finalized budget. So we do expect that. In principle, the budget has been agreed to, the big pieces. So now their teams, the Senate, the Assembly, and the governor's staff have to go to work now to get those details printed, the amendments done to the bills. That'll start to happen over the next couple of days. We're hoping we have a final budget by the weekend. So therefore, on the calendar, next Wednesday, there'll be a special board meeting at 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday morning, where we'll be able to approve a budget. The reason we want to wait is because if there's any change in state aid, that's going to help the bottom line for our spending plan. So we want to be prepared for that. The tax levy's not going to increase, so we can talk about the tax levy increase to the budget, which is currently at 2.2%. That's the proposed tax levy increase. And you can see, we have a 10-year look back here, where the average increase over that time has been 2.14. We enjoyed, we've always been under the tax cap since it's become legislation in New York State, or since legislation's become law. And so we stay right about that 2% average. We know that the 2% tax cap, as it was once advertised, is not 2%. For some districts, it's 6%. For some, it's been a negative number. For some, it's been 0.1. For us, it's been 0.7. It all has to do with the formula where inflation and CPI live for the previous year, but it is generally known as a 2% tax cap. Hampton Bay's has been fairly true to that on average over the past 10 years. So you can see, we're right in the realm, and it reminds us how we are very cognizant of the tax burden in Hampton Bay, that the local share of revenue is a big one in Hampton Bay. That's property taxes. Some districts receive upwards of 50% or more in state aid. Those are higher-need school districts. Some receive even less than us. But we know that every dollar that comes from Albany is one that doesn't necessarily have to be paid for by the property taxpayers. So the boards of Ed, and I'm saying for the benefit of those watching at home, too, that the Board of Ed is committed to not only investing in program but mitigating property taxes in a community where we have a higher tax rate burden than most of our peers on the East End, with the exception of maybe one or two. So our budget-to-budget proposal this year is a 3.2% budget proposal. That's a spending plan. That's a spending increase of 3.2%. That will change next week a little bit, if state aid changes a little bit. I don't expect state aid is going to change a lot, because we were not one of those districts who received a cut in foundation aid. So we already got ours. It sounds like, from what we can read in the paper, and what we've talked from our advocates who are in the Capitol every day, is that the real priority is to restore the funding to the districts who receive big cuts. And so would we get something if the inflation factor, or there's a little piece of the formula that squeaked? We might get something. So that number might change a little bit. It's not going to go down, but it might go up. It might go to 3.21%. You know, it's not going to be a life-changing amount of money, but we can't vote on that budget, you can't vote on that budget proposal until we have that final, final number. So you'll see a 2.2% increase in the tax levy from $48.6 million to $49.7 million. I'm going to ask Larry to spend a couple minutes talking about local revenue, because that's where we've seen a considerable shift. When we entered the budget phase, you'll remember, I guess it was March's meeting and earlier in February, when it was still a little hazier, we were projecting that our budget was over the tax cap at that point. One of our goals was to commit to remaining under the tax cap, delivering a 12th consecutive budget that's under the tax cap, that does not use our reserves, so we're not living on our state, we're not going grocery shopping with our savings account, and one that preserves the programs that made sense, that were working, that were well-populated, and that our kids were experiencing success. When we rolled over all of our expenses and we looked at new enrollment, new programming, where pension costs went, where transportation costs were going, special education costs were a key driver, we saw that our budget moved past what the tax cap and the state aid number looked like. So we were in a position that we were, that we had been in for many years prior to COVID, where the number would come in and we would have to cut. We would have to tighten belts, we'd have to defer, we'd have to be very strategic in how we use money over a period of time. We can't do it this year. We can't paint this this year. We're going to do it next year. We're going to strategize and prioritize. COVID changed that for us a little bit. The full funding of foundation aid changed that for us. And what we said to you last year and the previous year was, "We don't know what the future holds. Let's use this foundation aid right now," which last year was $2.2 million in increase. "Let's use that foundation aid right now for one-time expenses." Because if we go shopping now and get recurring expenses, and next year we have, when we're fully funded, and we might expect only a 2.5% to 3.5% increase, not a 35% increase, we're not going to be able to sustain those costs. It was a smart financial move by Larry to recommend that to the board and for you all to accept that. Because as we finish up with this year's capital projects in that line, which include a renovation of the toilet rooms at the elementary school in 1957, when, first time they've been done since 1957, the windows on the west face of the elementary school and the opaque lighting that is now 15, 16 years old at the middle school in what we call the E-wing in the architecture plans, the cafeteria, gym. All of those funds have been used in the budget increases this year. So it was a smart fiscal move that made the cut, not a bone cut, but a tightening of what expenses can we meet out over time. So one of the things that got us under, back under the tax cap, was looking at, as we're looking at our expenses, looking at the revenue and how those two things balance. Let me turn it to Larry for a few minutes to talk about the big change under local revenue.
Thanks, Mr. Clancy. So one of the big factors in the revenue budget is what we call local revenue. And it's made up of three key components, or three big components. Interest earned on the money we have in our accounts. Tan premium, what the winner of our tan pays, actually pays us in order to get us to borrow from, that is called the tan premium. And the third piece is the prior-year Boces refund. So if you look back to COVID, those three things didn't equate to more than about $330,000. Lot of money in your home budget, not a lot of money in the school budget. And it wasn't changing much, because interest rates weren't changing much. In the last year, year and a half, of course, interest rates have gone up significantly, and we've seen a tremendous difference in the amount of interest our accounts are earning. From like, I go back to COVID time, one year I think we had as low as $14,000 in interest. And you look at where we are today, at over $700,000 a year to date in interest. And you can see, wow, this is a big difference in generator. So looking at the local revenue, projecting it out to next year, and then taking a conservative approach, we felt we were safe to add about $600,000 in local revenue into the budget or bring it up just over $1 million. And that's where we were able to sort of bridge the budget gap to make revenue and expenses meet and get us over the hump.
I joke, I call him Uncle Larry sometimes, you know, go to Uncle Larry when you need something. But we joke that, you know, that day is coming, the day is coming, the day is coming. And for many years, the day wasn't here, and then foundation aid got filled in. But the day's here. The day's here where it got tight. The day's here where we really, at some points in this strategy of developing the budget, we're looking at using reserves to, for the purposes that they were intended for. But you really only need to use those when, you only want to use them when you really need to. And so Larry knowing up, down, left and right around this budget helped us get to a proposal that preserves the programs, was preventative in pushing us off what New York State is calling the fiscal cliff with all of the federal COVID dollars that are expiring at the end of September 2024. There was a lot of concern that all of this money that came from the federal government in the COVID recovery era was going to be used to get to add programs, add staff that were no doubt needed, but the funding wouldn't exist for it at some point. And then decisions would need to be made about, okay, what are all the things that we need, of all the things we need, what are the things we need the least? And we didn't want to get into that situation that we've seen others get into. And so there's been a very conservative and sober approach to threading those investments that were in the grants into the general fund so that they're sustainable, that they respect the mitigation goals for the taxpayer, that invest in our staff and then invest in the programs for kids. So I am very confident that while this is largely a maintenance budget, there's not a big new flashy thing's happening. We're not adding staff. We were able to thread in from the COVID grants the two additional social workers who we had brought on, you know, to serve mental health supports and needs. There's never a shortage of work in their days, and so that was a healthy move. Otherwise, this is largely a maintenance budget. Maintaining the programs for kids, a more than 200% increase in advanced placement offerings, 18 course offerings in the advanced placement program, a number of college, dual enrollment college courses that kids can take advantage of, from SUNY Suffolk to SUNY Albany and St. Joseph's College and other places as well. Maintaining all of our varsity JV and middle school programs that are healthy, you know, every year we might have to run a JV or not run one, but the ability to run those programs is not financially driven or limited at this point. Class sizes can still stay at a healthy and ideal at the primary level between 17 and 20 students, which is a healthy place to be in a primary-level classroom, as you know. And the budget proposal that we will present includes an under-the-tax-cap budget, again, 2.2% on the tax levy and 3.18 on the spending increase at this point. At this point, what I'll do is look ahead to what the voters will see come May. Since this is where we have our, the special meeting will be quick to adopt the final budget number, but this is the opportunity to just look ahead to Tuesday, May 21. Polls will be open at Hampton Bay's Middle School from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the gymnasium, as it has always been since 2009, I guess, Larry. Two propositions, one to vote for the budget for 2024, '25. The second proposition is one that's also about 17 years old, shows up each year, to authorize the use of up to $300,000 in any unused funds this year for minor and basic repair and maintenance. So just an opportunity to have funds available for us when something happens that's unexpected in our normal maintenance and upkeep program. We will have two Board of Education candidates up for election. Mrs. Cohane and Mrs. Scully have both indicated their interest and commitment in running for reelection. Thank you both for that, and thank you for your service on the board to date, next year, and your continued participation is important, I think. So candidate packets are due on Monday, April 22. Materials will be translated into Spanish language, again, in accordance with the Voting Rights Act of 1965. And as you look into the budget calendar, we'll have a budget hearing on May 7. Marion does a remarkable job getting early ballots out and military ballots out. That stuff starts to happen next week already. Military, individuals in the military who are registered to vote in Hampton Bay's have the opportunity. That has to happen, of course, much sooner, because it could be overseas, and getting the ballot there back and recorded on Vote Day requires some time. So May 7, we'll have our budget hearing here in the high school cafeteria. Newsletter will go out just after that and the six-day notice. People can still register to vote. You can go onto our website under Board of Education, the applications there. Marion has applications as well and can walk anybody through that. The budget vote against Tuesday, May 21 at the high school. At this point, I'll answer any questions from the board.
I think you hit it all.
You did a good job. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for, thank you to the departments for creating a budget, Larry.
Correction, sir. You said the vote was at the high school in your last comment.
Did I?
Middle school.
Tired, okay. Hampton Bay's Middle School, 70 Ponquay Avenue. Look for the purple signs that say "vote" here. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Lawrence. We are going to do a consent agenda from 4A to 4D. Do I need a motion?
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Student Services is 5A only. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Personnel will be from 6A to 6H. There's no questions. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will do from 7A to 7D. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We can't do yet, so we will do public comment. Persons may address the Board of Education on any matters of interest or concern. The board president will recognize all speakers. Time limits may be imposed based upon agenda needs. Looks pretty quiet out there. All right. And I need a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all. Have a good night and get home safe.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Get your sign in.
That's right.
What's that?
Oh, yeah.